I now call the Ripon City Council Meeting of August the, or not August, but October the 11th to session. Will you all please stand and recite a pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you all please remain standing for the invocation?
Let's pray. God, we come before you in this time to take a breath and pause and understand that without your wisdom, without your presence, without your guidance, we lead in a fashion that is muddled and incoherent in many ways. And so, God, we appeal to you in this time. This is the seat of power for this community, and we take seriously this issue of power that we hold. And we come to you, we petition to you for your wisdom, for your guidance. There are various constituencies that we represent or that we serve, and we ask, God, that we would be faithful to them. But, God, as we know you in your heart, there is a constituency that is greatly valued by you, and that is the poor and the needy. And may we have them on our heart as well. And we understand that part of our responsibility as leaders is to speak for those who cannot speak for themselves, to serve those who are hidden and marginalized, God, to understand that this is the heart of your Son Christ, Jesus, and that we follow him and his ways. So give us that strength, that courage, to make those tough choices that will represent you. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Lisa, will you please do the roll call?
Member Leo Zuber.
President.
Mark Gwinchell.
President.
Michael Rastusia.
President.
Vice Mayor Dean Uecker.
Here.
Mayor Jake Parks.
Here.
I will now open the city council meeting up to public hearing. The time is provided for the public to, or public discussion, not public hearing. The time is provided for any member of the public to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. So if you have something to speak on, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. So, also, public discussion will be limited to five minutes.
Avenue. This is really not worth your time, except that names mean a lot to me. And when we came back to Ripon about sixteen years ago, I noticed that a lot of people around Ripon were pronouncing Mavis Stof incorrectly. It is Mavis Stoffer Park. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else would like to speak, please step up.
Hi, I'm Danny Salisbury. I live right on, I live on Moeller Road, and I live directly on the county side, but on the other side of the street is city. And I have talked to the Ripon Police Department, I've talked to the County Sheriff's Department, and they both tell me that because I live in a place where the street is shared by county and city, good luck getting someone out there to give tickets for people doing fifty and sixty down a thirty-five mile an hour zone. I've almost been hit twice checking, going across the street to my mailbox. My dog was almost hit once, and I was, and a person almost hit me as I was pulling out of my driveway because, and they couldn't stop because they were going so fast. They literally do at night, late in the evenings, they do sixty and seventy. I think they're racing down the street, and sometimes there's these really big trucks that are doing fifty down that street. And I just want to get somebody out there to give some tickets, put up a, you know, it's, across the street is the city, so why can't somebody come out there with one of those speed things where they put the thing across the street and tell them how fast they're going? Because it's dangerous. And I've been living at 24677 South Moeller Road for three years now, and off and on, and, because I'm, live in Las Vegas, but I come because my husband is working here. And I'm just really upset. I get really very upset because it's dangerous on that road. So, but they, the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department are telling me good luck. Can't do nothing about it. We, we get into arguments over who's going to go down there and give tickets. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Mucy. I live at 345 Rose Court here in Ripon. And I addressed the council on August 9th concerning a letter from Elizabeth Forks dated May 27th about horses and chickens. Then, when the minutes came out from that August 9th meeting, it stated that Ms. Mucy doesn't understand the violation she received and why she must vacate the premises over by Save Mart. There's a big pasture. I had horses and chickens out there. And in the minutes from your meeting, it said that I needed a better understanding. I would appreciate the staff and the council looking into this matter, because time was of the essence. Now, I noticed once again, when I picked up my minutes for the meeting today, it states very clearly that the city staff will be instructed where appropriate to either provide a response within days following the council meeting, or to place the issue on a subsequent meeting for the city council or one of the appointed commissions. To date, the only person I've heard from is Elizabeth Forks and Ken Zeitavart. It hasn't been put on a meeting. What I came here for was very clear, and I wasn't confused, and I didn't misunderstand. And so, I'm back again. There has been a procedure that's gone through that's ended up with citations and extensions and back and forth with Kenny Zeitavart and Elizabeth Forks trying to resolve this issue. And that's what I came here for in the first place. I, I very clearly came here the first time to make you aware of the situation, because, you know, everybody's busy doing their jobs, and I get that. I asked for the complaint. That's what I came here for. I asked for the complaint. To date, I still haven't seen the complaint. I haven't heard what the complaint is, and every time I get a response, the complaint changes, as evidenced by the letters from Ken Zeitavart and Elizabeth Forks. I asked, when I came here before, if I could correct the information that was being disseminated. Example, how long I've been using the land. Anyone who drives over the Fulton Overpass knows clearly, I've been out there for longer than two years. If someone's going to say bad incorrect information, there has to be a way to go about correcting that. There was also incorrect information being disseminated about my relationship with Ted Matzie, and that I could be in violation of trespassing or something. That clearly wasn't the case. He and I have been in constant conversation, and he travels a lot, so I'm speaking for myself, but also on behalf of him. I asked for a resolution when I came to the council last time. I asked the council to consider doing an interim use until the land was developed. I haven't heard a word about that. I did get a phone call from Elizabeth Forks on August 19th after I came to the council meeting, ten days after, and she said that the complaint involved encampment. Never got a letter about that. How did, how did it change from horses and chickens to encampments? That there were noxious weeds. That never came about until we had a meeting with the zoning compliance committee, and Dennis Bitters had mentioned something about, yeah, it'd be good to kind of get some of those weeds knocked down. And then it became about noxious weeds. So we took care of those. And that there were horses on the property. Well, I wasn't hiding them. I'm not the criminal here. So, you know, I'm, I'm back again asking you, what is the complaint? How do you get a complaint? Whatever, if it's anonymous, or if you send a letter, or, how do you get that complaint? You can deduct the information for the, for the person who submitted the complaint, if you even have that, because I understand they can be anonymous. But there ought to be a date and a time, a recording from the dispatcher's office. There ought to be some way to hear what it is that people have against you. Who are my accusers? And that should not be a secret, and that should not change from week to week. If there is a complaint, it should be easy to figure that out. Okay, so then I get another letter, a second notice of non-compliance after I had gone out, taken care of the things that were brought to my attention. And Rosie Vappello from Terpsira's office, her and I went back and forth on the phone a little bit, trying to contact each other. So, I'm assuming that, nobody could clarify this, and sixteen, I mean, 8.16.040 has to do with interfering with the passage of pedestrians or vehicles or endangering the health of property or a visual blight. So I'm thinking, well, those produce boxes must be blocking the garbage truck. Now, they've been out there for a long time. Garbage truck, I see come and go all the time. Nothing ever happens. But nonetheless, I've been here. I want to take care of it.
Yeah, Debbie, I don't mean to cut you off. We're at the five-minute mark, so I want to go ahead and give you another minute, so that way you can make sure that you can articulate everything that you need to, so.
Okay, well.
But I just wanted to let you know that there will be another minute.
Thank you. I don't see a timer, but that, thank you for that. I've given you each a packet of photographs that can clearly show. The first three photographs on your pile were the after, where I went and cleaned up the weeds, took away the produce boxes, stacked the pallets up, moved the horse feed bins and stuff out of the sight of vision. And those are the first three. There also is a letter that I gave to Jake that showed the photographs from Elizabeth Forks and Ken concerning what I needed to address, although they weren't clear or clearly defined. So I did the best I can. Then I get another notice that says, you are, you are in violation. You need to clear out the rubbish. So, the other pictures are of rubbish throughout the city, because Ken told me that this material is not normally associated with vacant undeveloped property, therefore is considered junk and debris. So alls I did was drive around Ripon, take pictures of undeveloped properties with junk and debris and pallets, and you can see them there. So what I'm asking you for is please address this. Tell me how you're going to deal with complaints and zoning, and how the citizens become victims, criminals, or villains.
Thank, thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't think the people in the city want to be considered one, on one of those lists.
Thank you very much, sir Debbie.
Counsel, would it be appropriate for us individually to be able to meet with her or not? To go out there and see what's there?
It's not a problem for you to meet with any constituent on any matter, but this is pending, this is obviously pending before the code enforcement committee.
Correct. And it's not on the agenda, so therefore we can't.
Obviously, yeah, correct.
But I just want to be able to go out and see what it is and have somebody explain it to me. That's all. I mean, I can see the pictures, but I want to.
Well, here's the thing. The code enforcement committee has this matter. It's a pending matter. There's, there are appeal processes from there that have been explained already. And we'll make sure that we, I'll make sure my staff reviews the comments tonight on tape, and that we provide a response. The difficulty with, this is not a council matter. That's the bottom line under our ordinance. It doesn't come to the council by design. And so, you can, you're always welcome to meet with any constituent about any matter, and so we don't discourage that. But this is a pending matter, and there's a process.
I understand.
And I'll make sure that she does understand the process through my staff. So, going back and forth on this, and then this, we're not going to get anywhere.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Debbie, actually, Debbie, if you have any questions afterwards, you can ask Tom. So, because we have to kind of keep moving.
I should be notified where you are.
Okay, okay. Not a problem.
If I can gather those things up from you, just that letter from the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, not a problem. We'll, we'll provide those to you afterwards. So, you're welcome. Moving on, that, oh, not going to let me bang my gavel in my mic. So, that closes the public discussion section for this evening's city council meeting. Do we have an approval of the minutes?
Moved to approve.
Second. Would any member of the council like to pull any item on the agenda?
Yes, I'd just like to pull 3D.
Which one was that, Mark?
3D.
3D, as in Dope. Okay.
Project Improvement.
Okay. Any of the council members pull any items?
I have three others. 3B, as in boy, 3C.
Three?
Three, all three. 3B, 3C, and 3F.
Okay. Okay, so we have items 3B, 3C, 3D, and 3F, and we will take those in order as they appear. Okay. All right, so we did that. So then, do we have an approval of the consent, or the agenda as amended?
Still moved.
Second. Do we have an approval of the consent calendar?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, so moving on to the items that were pulled. 3B. Councilman Zuber?
I just have a question, because the material in the packet had a verbal description of where the easement was. I have no idea where it is or what is being done. Can you give me a brief description?
Yeah, SSGID has a thirty-foot easement from the back of the sidewalk along Doak Boulevard. So that runs along the frontage of our property. And so, the improvements that we are constructing as part of the CNG expansion project are going to encroach on that easement. And we have a plan. I can show you a plan with that, kind of a plan view showing you that. But basically, it's from the back of the walk, thirty feet onto the property, heading south.
I see.
And then it runs.
So I assume there might be a driveway that runs through there?
Yeah, there's going to be a driveway. There'll be some landscaping and irrigation, just minor surface improvements.
No structures?
No, no structures within the easement.
All right. Thank you.
So, moving on to 3C.
Well, the reason I pulled it is mainly to make sure that the few people that are here understand why this is even on here, if they weren't here at the last meeting. And Mr. Zeitavart, if I'm wrong, feel free to interject. But for the past few months, we have been looking at our commercial developer fees in order to review them, and where necessary, adjust them to make us, at least, if not at best, competitive with the cities in the area. And one of the issues that came up during that process is the consultant wasn't always able to adequately explain why some fees in some cities, Lathrop was the primary example, were so much lower than ours on a fairly consistent basis. And so, the decision was made at the last meeting to have that consultant do more in-depth research and provide Ken and the planning department with this handbook, which would explain why the fees are different. Because preliminarily, some of what he was saying was they, they're using some forms of debt financing where you don't pay it upfront, but you are going to pay, and in some cases, more over time than you would pay if you did the same thing here. So it's, it's an attempt on our part to give the planning department a tool to use, so that when they meet with potential commercial developers, they have the necessary information to explain why Ripon is doing what it's doing and how, in totality, might compare with neighboring communities. How'd I do?
Excellent. Okay. Moving on to 3D.
Yes. Ken, would you go ahead and review the improvement agreement with Jim Co Truck Stop?
Yeah, thank you, counsel, honorable counsel. Basically, what you have in front of you tonight is a project improvement agreement. Jim Co Truck Stop has, for some time, it's been looking to get rid of their stormwater pond in the back. If you've driven in the back of that site, you can see there's a pond back there, which all their stormwater goes to. And they also have some issues with water quality. They have their own well on-site. They're not hooked to city services. So they are, they're in an attempt to hook up to city water and sewer and storm on that site, which is a minor site review, which has been working through the city process. But part of that is considered development, and they would be required to do certain improvements. For instance, curb gutter and sidewalk and such along the frontage road, which currently does not have any of that, some landscaping. They're going to be doing some other cleanup on-site. So this project improvement agreement is a mechanism here that gets recorded against the property, and they put some money up in form of bonds and stuff to assure that those improvements get completed. I apologize, Exhibit A, which is an attachment to this project improvement agreement, was not in the packet, but it does list out all the improvements that they're going to be doing on the site. And it does have some, it's kind of spread out over time, so they're not going to be obviously hit with all these improvements in one foul swoop there, basically. They'll have a little bit of time to kind of work up to some of them, including even undergrounding some of the utility lines across the frontage of their site. So that's what the project improvement agreement is for.
Okay. Are there any issues with soil contamination out there? That Truck Stop's been there for a long time, and there's a lot of mechanical work being done with solvents, cleaners, et cetera?
No, we're not aware of any, but they have been dealing with the storm, the water quality control board for their stormwater pond in the back, which is what they're trying to get them to get rid of and hook into city services, so that pond goes away. There could be some issues out there that, that they need to resolve, but they would work through that process outside of kind of our realm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 3F.
I just have a couple of, oops, couple of questions, mainly on the second page. Under financial impact, the last part of the last sentence says it represents a $35,000 savings to the city's overall budget. As I read the first part, how else I put this? That's a paper savings, right? In other words, we thought it was going to cost $35,000 more than it actually is. In point of fact, it's costing us money to give these benefits, correct?
That's right. The, the actual cost between calendar year 2016 and 2017 is a little over $62,000 increase. It's about four and a half percent of the total healthcare premium costs we pay.
Okay. I applaud you for your budgeting, but I just wanted people to understand it's costing us money to do this, not saving us money.
It's a good point. And actually, during the public hearing, I have a slide that shows all the money, what it costs to provide these benefits.
The other question I have has to do with Table 2. It shows that employees that are at the employee plus, using the employee plus family plan are going to be paying some out-of-pocket expenses. They're not, they're not paying 100% of the increase in cost, correct?
That's right. It's a 50/50 split with the city.
So that, for instance, the Kaiser employee plus family that's going to be paying $59.63 out of his or her own pocket, the 181964 that the city's paying includes a $59 increase, or whatever the difference is, on our side, too?
That's right. That's exactly right.
All right. Thank you.
Judging from the tenor of those comments, it doesn't sound like we have anything too controversial. Do we mind taking all these together?
I'll move, we approve all four items.
Second.
Moving on to the consent calendar. We now have public hearing, public hearing. Item 4A.
Ken?
No, no.
Do you mind putting up the presentation?
Yeah, no, that's okay. Kevin, is this you?
Yeah, I'll take this one. So, as you recall, probably from the last couple of years, the city council voted a couple of years ago that we go through a public hearing each year to talk about the, the cost of the health and welfare benefits. So that, that is what I was going to touch on right now. And this really does apply to the discussion and resolutions 5A through 5D also. So, kind of hit it all at once. But as we talked about earlier, there, we paid about $1.4 million, or in 2016, we paid about $1.4 million for the health and welfare plans that we offer our employees. This includes medical, dental, vision, chiropractic, life insurance, and long-term disability. And the way we do our, our health and welfare programs are all on a calendar year basis. And like we just talked about, the increase for 2017 was just over $62,000, which represented about a four and a half percent increase to the total cost. Similar side of what we just talked about, this goes back a few years also. The city council had set certain maximum premiums that we were going to provide to the employees. For the Kaiser employees, that was $1,760 a month. For Blue Shield employees, it was $1,415 a month. The reason for the difference, and I'll talk about this next slide, one of the things we were doing right around the start of the recession is trying to find ways to, to save money. You know, the goal has always been to provide a high level of benefit to the employees for the lowest cost. And one of the things we talked about, this probably goes back to 2008, I would, if I remember correctly, is with Blue Shield, we went to a, a silver plan rather than a gold plan, which obviously has a higher deductible. And what the city had done is take that risk on, and they're paying the deductible. So we'll talk a little bit more about that the next slide. But this shows what the 2016 premiums were for the Blue Shield employees and the Kaiser employees, and we do separate it by employee classifications, whether it's employee only, employee and spouse, et cetera. So, I'm not going to go through each number, but you can see what the changes were from 2016 to 2017. And as we talked about earlier, there's a certain share of that, that for the employees are within the employee and family category, what they share in right now on a, on a monthly basis, and what the, the city responsibility is for that. I would just note that in 2016, the employees within the Blue Shield plan, within the employee and family category, were paying $75 a month. That increased to $129 a month. And those within Kaiser, again, within the employee and family category, they had increased from just about $12 a month to just $160 a month. One of the things that we've been doing is tracking, I'm sorry, so it goes back to 2013, not 2008, like I thought. But one of the things we've been doing is tracking to making sure that, you know, I think what was the basis of the idea of converting to the silver plan, and the city taking on some of that risk. of silver plan for those Blue Shield employees, you can see what the gold shield, the gold plan would have been with those, with that premium saving, I'm sorry. It's the difference between the gold plan and the silver plan, the premium savings between the two. You see on the far left, to the right of that, the reimbursement cost, those are the actual costs that the city has been reimbursing employees over those years. So the difference between those two is the annual savings from if we would have stayed on that gold plan. And for 2016, that $18,000 is the actual cost through September 2016. So this is a public hearing, and there is an action that's recommended on the agenda, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does counsel have any questions for staff regarding the staff report? Counselor Mr. Stusha?
I have one question. Who came up with this idea?
I don't remember. I think it was a combination, you know, this was a time when I think we were trying some different things, HSAs, and we really were trying some different options with varying degrees of success. If I remember right, it was a combination that came out of a meeting with the city council and staff and Bohanans that came up with this idea.
Well, it was before I got on the city council. I got to tell you, this was a brilliant idea. You're saving the city $12,000 a lot. I think you guys were on the council at the time, you guys did a brilliant job. I applaud you for it.
Yeah, it definitely was a team effort coming up with this idea, if I recall correctly.
Counsel, have any other questions for, on the staff report?
Are we on, this is about 4A?
This is about 4A, yes.
Okay.
This is about the staff report for 4A.
Right. And this is about council member benefits? Is, okay.
But it applies to 5A.
Right, I understand that. Of the council members who get benefits, how many are at the employee plus family rate?
Do you know that, Lisa? I'm not sure.
Probably just me.
Yeah. Just one.
Just one.
Just me.
So that, I just want to make sure I understand, that council member would be paying either the $59 or the $129 a month. The others, who are at a lower, would be paying nothing?
That's right.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Actually, that's not true. Because it's, it's 129, but the person, the family, they're responsible for $75, I believe.
And that's increasing.
Right. That was last year. You're going to get a bigger bill.
All right. So as this is a public hearing, we will open it up to the public. Does the public have any comments concerning the staff report? Seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public discussion section of the public hearing.
No.
And we will open it back up to the council. Does the council have any questions, comments, concerns concerning 4A?
I do not, so if...
No, that's what I was going to say, as I read what's on here, we can do all of these at once.
No, that's five.
He's wanting to finish on four.
Yeah, we'll do four, and then we'll move on to five, yeah.
I'll approve the resolution adopting an increase in cost of health benefits for calendar year for 2017.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Now, we will move on to 5A, and we will take 5A through 5D together.
Mr. Werner's report applies to these, too. In other words, they're in the same boat.
As I understand it, yeah.
I'll move, we adopt resolutions 5A through 5D.
Do we have a second?
With a clarification at page 42.
Moving on to item 6A, ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, when we enacted the recent joint trans ordinance, we neglected to repeal three chapters that would be inconsistent with that ordinance and which are out of date, and those are chapters 5.28, 5.29, and 5.32 of the former municipal code. So this is a cleanup item requiring waiver, first reading, and introduction.
Perfect.
And that would be the motion we'd be seeking.
Thank you very much. Counsel, have any comments?
The only thing I would say is when I saw, just read the intro, kind of, when I saw cable and communications again, I thought, oh, gosh, not again.
So did I, when I realized we hadn't repealed them. My language is more colorful than yours.
Well, I'm a elect, so I had to be careful.
Yeah, not real anymore.
Does the, counsel have any other comments?
Is it all still going to be underground?
This does nothing do with it.
Yeah. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion, we waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Item 6B.
I can start this one, and Vice Mayor Uker or Tom may, or Police Chief Armani may have additional to add, but staff has been meeting with the committee that's been set up to talk about the alcohol ordinance. As I'm sure you're aware, the current municipal code prohibits any consumption of alcohol within any public place. So I think as Vice Mayor Uker talked about, at the last meeting, there was three different options that were raised by the, brought up by the committee. Staff has been working on the ordinance that you see in the packet to try to incorporate those as much as possible within the ordinance. I think throughout the day today, Tom and I probably took a, not only second, but probably was actually our third or fourth look at this. I think we would like an opportunity to go back and maybe look at this one more time. We want to make sure we get this right the first time and not have to keep bringing it back. So there's a couple of concerns we had as we were looking at that ordinance. So what that staff is requesting to hold off with the first reading and introduction, but we're happy to take any comments that the council or anyone from the whole had, and we could take that back with us as we work on this ordinance.
Counselor Mr. Stusha?
Just a couple of questions when I read through this, Kevin. Again, more clarification and questions about how it came about. The first question that popped in my mind when I read this was on page 95, we talked about their applications need to be in by February 1st. What if a new business moves into town, or in March they decide to do something in June out of luck?
We agree.
Okay, okay. The second thing was, there was something about limiting the number of, oh, yeah, why are we limiting it to April, May, June, July, August, September, just because, just because of summer months, spring summer months? We don't want people out there in the rain.
Yeah, I think some of the discussion that was, that were happening in the committee had talked about was, you know, once they put up the fencing around those parking stalls, you know, it's going to be substantial. It's not something they're going to bring in and out on a daily basis. So if it was going to be up, you know, let's just define the month, so.
And again, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with any of these, I'm just asking the questions. So why nine o'clock at night is the limit? You know, some people stay out until 10, 11, the bars open until probably 2:00. Was there some magic behind the nine o'clock, or is that something else you guys were?
Yeah, I think it was there for discussion.
Okay, so that's one thing I bring up. I'm with Dean, I don't drink anymore, but I have a question about the alcohol part of it. Some people, like somebody I know likes Crown and Seven, this is limited to beer and wine. What if somebody walks out with a Crown and Seven and wants to have that with their dinner? Why, why is it limited to the type of alcohol? I mean, people can get just as bad on beer as they can at anything else and just, again, we're talking about, I mean, I guess I can understand the parks, but downtown dining, if you have a cocktail with dinner and you happen to want a Crown and Seven or a margarita or something like that, this doesn't allow that. And if we're going to allow it, I think we ought to allow people to have it. I mean, if they get disorderly, they can get disorderly with beer and wine as they can with something else. So I'm just asking the question, why limit what they may have?
I can answer part of that. When we first started looking at the downtown dining, where it'd be an extension of the restaurants downtown, ABC would limit the type of alcohol that's being permitted to be taken outside of the restaurant, which would be beer and wine.
Oh.
So you have the other carryovers to the other parts of the ordinance.
So that's an ABC issue?
Yes.
Oh, really? Okay. That's probably outdated. Another question, if you don't mind, page 101, and again, I'm not trying to put pressure on anybody, but if an application is submitted, why do we have 20 working days to approve it? I mean, is it really that complicated once it hits? Because it says city administrator has, so the recommendation's done to have this, and it's submitted for approval, I guess, to the city administrator desk, and he has, why 20 days to review? I mean, is it really that big and long and complicated document?
No, I don't think it necessarily normally would take 21 days or 20 days, whatever we put in there. I think we're just kind of giving ourselves a little extra time.
Okay, it was 20 working days, which is a month.
Yeah.
Okay, again, I'm just asking the question for you guys to consider. I'm not going to disagree, I don't know.
I appreciate it. We could go back and take a closer look at that.
Okay, and then the next and last item, it seemed like the timing was kind of perfect on this, there was something about the Ripon Chamber of Commerce, I think, and Tamara could better answer that, but I think it ought to be Chamber of Commerce slash or Ripon Chamber Foundation, because they're two different entities, and you don't want to get yourself captured to where they don't, they're not part of this, if that makes sense. So again, just a thought. That's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Counselor Stusha. Councilman Zubur?
I have a few questions. I guess my first larger question has to do with the downtown dining portion also. And my question is, do we have to have that portion of the ordinance written with such specificity? In other words, somebody could come in with something that maybe they wanted to block away, or maybe they want to change the hour, or whatever, and in looking at it, it's okay, but it's going to take six months to go back and change the ordinance so that we can allow them to do it, because this is so specific. In my mind, I would think if we're going to do this, the ordinance ought to set some parameters, some boundaries, and then we could leave it up to the special events committee or whoever they're going to have to talk to anyway, to work out the details so that everybody is satisfied. I just, because right now, you've got a time, a place, a loc, you know, da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da, and it's written down in an ordinance. If we mess up one thing, the whole thing's dead for six months while we go through the process of figuring out what we should have said.
Yeah, we talked about that as well this afternoon and agreed that needs to be looked at, as well as really what are we defining here by when we talk about a community dining event? What is that? And I think from a staff level, we're struggling a little bit to understand what are the contours of that, what are the limits of that? And if there, if it is an idea that is worth pursuing and allowing, why allow it only once? And why go through such a, the process? It's good for one group, it's good for other groups, and how do you address that issue? We also have concerns at a staff level about putting the amphitheater events and the downtown community dining events into the special events ordinance, because the special events ordinance is of more general application, and then we have specific, three specific carve-outs in the very middle of the ordinance. So for somebody who's being, who's looking at this ordinance for the first time and doesn't want to do one of those three designated events but wants to do something else with alcohol, they're going to read this and gloss right over the titles and say alcohol's allowed in these events, and we're going to have a mess on our hands. So that's part of why we want to go back and just rework this a bit. And, but one of the areas where we'd like some guidance is what does the council really want and intend to allow in terms of these downtown events? Not the restaurant part with the outdoor dining and all that, we can work our way through that, I don't think that's all that difficult, but it's that last category that's tough for us. We know that it's driven in part by the desire, I think of the chamber, to have, to have an event in the downtown where it's, you know, not restaurant-driven, but the food comes from elsewhere, and they want to have an event where they can have alcohol. The difficulty for us is how do we define that, how do we regulate that, and how do we, more importantly, how do we limit it? So that's really what we're looking for some guidance on, and I think we'll keep working with those who are on the committee and internally to try to come up with a better version of this to bring back to you.
I have a few more questions, too, along that line. In section 5.40.070B, it talks about this hearing process. What I don't understand from what I read is whether or not the hearing has to occur at a regularly scheduled meeting, or if it could occur at a special meeting, because the way it's written, it doesn't say, but it says that the hearing will be scheduled at a regularly scheduled meeting, which means if it's going to be at another regular, a month later, we're going to have the hearing, and a month after that, we'll be able to schedule the decision. And I'm not sure that works.
Sorry, this keeps going off. We have discussed that, and you're right, there needs to be either a provision allowing the hearing to be set for a special meeting to be determined by, called by either the mayor or the city administrator, or we need to rework this section to provide for the hearing at the next regularly scheduled council meeting and try to find a way to work at it administratively between them. So you're right.
Well, moving on down, section 5.40.100, I'm not, I'm not remembering exactly what, I think it deals with where and how, special provisions applicable to the downtown. I'm also wondering if we need to have some, it needs to be discussed, whether there ought to be provisions in there that this event, will it or will it not, cause a problem for people to access downtown? In other words, if we're going to block off a street, there might be a businessman or two who's really not thrilled with that. And are we going to assume the ability to override that, or is it going to have to be considered? That's sort of why I'm looking at trying to give the special events committee a little bit more leeway with this so that they can have those kinds of discussions and figure this out, rather than it be written down. And again, this question comes up, says, I mean, you blocked me off from business for six hours that night? I don't agree. And the last one, this may be way out there, but I tend to go way out there because way out there comes around a lot faster than anybody ever thinks. This is the 5.40.110, this is a section that has to do with this constitutionally protected stuff. Says it basically doesn't apply to them. I guess in my own mind, I can find a creative way to make my downtown event constitutionally protected and basically tell the city to go buzz off. I think we need to look at that and make sure that we figure that out ahead of time.
Well, you're right. I understand where you're going with that. It's one of the reasons why I wanted to pull these special events, these designated ones like the community dining, the amphitheater events, and the Am and Boston Festival, out of this ordinance, because I don't think, I think you run into problems where it interferes with those sections. As a practical matter, I think it could be resolved with conditions of approval, but I think we don't need to borrow trouble, and that's why I want to pull it out of there and bring it back in a separate ordinance. So I know it must be frustrating for you to have me agree with you so many times in this single meeting.
It's actually rather enjoyable for all of us up here.
Well, it's interesting you bring that up, because I read it and I thought, well, that paragraph kind of says everything else that we just read and talked about, doesn't matter. Well, that one paragraph kind of says everything else we wrote up above, doesn't matter.
If you can find, if you can make what you're doing constitutionally protected.
And you and I can.
I probably could figure it out.
Okay. Do any of the other council members have any questions or comments regarding item 6B? So seeing none, we will go ahead and take staff's advice and pull item 6B until the next meeting. Or on another agenda, that's fine.
Hopefully, next meeting, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on to 7A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The audits for the city of Ripon and the money purchase pension plan for the fiscal year June 30, 2016 have been completed by Price, Page, and Company. The audit is a combination of all the financials of the city, and these audits are completed to fulfill requirements placed on us by state agencies and our bonding agencies. We use an independent third-party audit firm to ensure that we are Or on another agenda, that's fine.
Hopefully next meeting, yeah.
Yeah. Moving on to 7A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The audits for the City of Ripon and the money purchase pension plan for the fiscal year June 30, 2016 have been completed by Price, Page &amp; Company. The audit is a combination of all the financials of the city, and these audits are completed to fulfill requirements placed on us by state agencies and our bonding agencies. We use an independent third-party audit firm to ensure that we are in compliance with the laws and regulations. They review many of our transactions, our internal controls, and other policies to form an opinion on our financial statements. As noted in the audit committee letters, there were no significant audit findings, no difficulties encountered between the auditors and staff, and no disagreements between the management and the auditors. So in my opinion, it was another successful audit, and I'm very happy to present them to you this evening and the independent audit reports. No action is required this evening. We will bring them back in November with resolutions to be accepted on the consent calendar. And I'm happy to answer any question, and Dave Dibis from Price, Page &amp; Company is also here if you have any specific questions.
Does the council have any questions? Councilman Zubor?
Actually, I don't have any questions. First of all, I would like to commend the staff and the auditors because we're talking about the audit in October this year. And a year ago, we were talking about it in January. And I am happy that the auditing firm and the staff were able to work together and get this done in such a timely manner. It allows his plans for the year, knowing where the, what the financial situation is, without the year being half gone. So thank you, both, everybody. Now, having said that, I get, my biggest frustration is, and I'm, this is not, I don't expect any answers tonight, and this is not grounds for me to not appreciate the audit. I'm looking to the future. Because when I sat down and read the audit, I could not connect the audit findings with the financial data that I get from the staff. Terms were different, things were lumped together without any explanation. Lisa and I spent time together to try to get this figured out, and my biggest concern is that if the general public, who has a concern, has a question, has an issue about city finance, were to read the audit, they could jump to all kinds of erroneous conclusions because there's not enough information to allow them to understand what they're reading. In other words, we have these things called business-type activities. What in God's name were those? There was a lot of money showing up in business-type activities, which a person wanting to know why the city was not doing something that they wanted done could say, you've got the money, why aren't you doing it? When in point of fact, all of that money is committed to something else or sits under a set of requirements. But in reading the audit, you wouldn't know that. I mean, I've been looking at this stuff for four years, and I couldn't figure it out. And it's those kinds of things that I would hope, as time goes by, we begin to figure out how to pull all this together so that there is a common perception in the community about how the city functions, how the money is brought in, and where the money goes. If we can get that, then everybody can talk to each other about their issues, their concerns, and all that sort of thing. Right now, it depends on what piece of paper you pick up, on what day, and at what time of the month, what kind of a picture you have of the city's finances. So overall, thank you. I'm glad we're doing this now. We made a lot of progress, but I think we need to work a little more on the weaving of things together. That's it.
Councilman Restuccia?
I don't want to really reiterate what Leo said because you've already said most of what I was going to say about getting it early and all that. And there's been times I've come in and talked to Lisa, too, about, okay, now it bounces out for me and tell me how this thing works. I look at financial statements all the time and trying to piece it all together. Here's what I was happy about. It was, it was a qualified audit, or whatever you call it, it's qualified audit. It turned out fine, things balanced. But the question that I do have is, is this the first or second year we've used them?
Second.
Okay. My bigger question is, how were they to work with? Were they, were they what we thought they were going to be in terms of being helpful, courteous, not in the way, and all those kind of things?
Very much so, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes? Yeah, please.
Well, I should have expected you she would have said that.
What else was she going to say?
My name's Dave Dibis. I'm an audit manager with Price, Page &amp; Company in Colts, California. Do the external audit for the City of Ripon. First of all, I would like to thank Kevin and Lisa and their staff because they did an excellent job collaborating with us to make sure this was a timely audit this year. So I want to thank them both for that publicly. When it comes to the financial statements, unfortunately, we're constrained by government auditing standards as well as generally accepted auditing standards. So when it comes to the words like business activities, that's, that's, we're bound by that type of presentation, unfortunately. I think the best way to get an understanding of the situation in regards to the Ripon, City Ripon as it stands is by reading the management discussion analysis. I think that's a good snapshot of the activities of the city, and hopefully that would be maybe more of a bridge between what you see on a monthly basis that's brought to you from finance. But like I said, unfortunately, from our standpoint, it's just a challenge for us to make something. I understand where you're coming from because when you look at it and look at reconciliations and stuff, it's just a really, it's a hard follow, and I appreciate where you're coming from on that. But it's, unfortunately, it's, we're constrained by those rules and regulations for financial reporting.
Yes, Councilman Zubor?
I understand that, I really do. That's why I sort of qualified everything at the beginning. I'm not laying this off on you, or her, or Kevin. I'm just saying somehow, some way, for the benefit of the community, we need to figure this out. We need to figure out how to get financial information in the hands of people without raising questions. In spite of the limitations placed on you, in spite of things that we have to do, whether for the state or whatever, somehow, some way, we're intelligent, committed people. I think there's a way to do it. I'm just hoping, hoping we'll work at it and see.
I appreciate your concern, too, because I know you want to be transparent, and that's, that's the best way to be is because if you could tie something from a monthly basis to your year-end financials, to see your year-end accumulated activity for the year, I appreciate, I want that to be cohesive with what's been going on throughout the rest of the year. So I appreciate that.
Councilman Restuccia?
Yeah, I don't want to belabor this. I apologize. Because I agree with Leo. Lisa, I know that the reports that you do, seem like the same reports I saw when I was on the council the first time. Are there some reports, and I'm asking both of you, maybe not, that, that we can develop internally that aren't, that aren't, doesn't take a lot of complication to change, that will tie in a little easier so when we get it monthly, it flows better? Because you know, I come in and ask you questions all the time about those when we get them monthly. Because even to me, and I audit financial statements for a living, and I, I mean, I get confused sometimes.
The audit does balance the treasurer's report that you receive on a monthly basis. You just have to find the number in here. And I can show it to any of you.
Enough said.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Does the council have any other questions or comments concerning item 7A?
No.
So seeing none?
No action.
We will move on to item 7B. Lisa, is this you again?
I could take this one, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay. Mr. Warner?
It was requested by the city council that, at the time of the audit, that we also provide a street and road financial report. Hopefully, this is a little bit easier to read than the audit. But we tried to break it down to summarize the revenue and the expenses that have occurred for the street and road fund for fiscal year 1516 and compare it to the last two years. So I'll kind of just walk through just a summary of the financial status of the street and road fund. We started 1516 with $1.9 million in the street and road account. As you see on table one of this report, we had received about $2.1 million in revenue in 1516. From different state and local sources, that added up to about $1.1 million. We also went out and received some grant money, and then also council had allocated certain funds to be used out of a general fund surplus for future street and road projects and the downtown city parking lot on Second Street. So you could see those monies that are, have been put aside, and at this time, no money has been expensed from either of those funds. The only fund that was talked about, the last, it's included in the 1617 budget and was included as part of that year's capital improvement program, was to do the Second Street parking lot, which the engineering department is currently working on the design. So below that, I go through some of the background of those sources and what they can be used for. I won't go through that in detail unless you have any specific questions. Table three is a summary of the expenses that occurred in fiscal year 1516, and that was about $1.7 million. Again, it's separated between the operating expenses and the capital street and road expenses. And just real quickly with the operating expenses, it includes about $300,000 that was used for street and road maintenance. That's the time that Ted's crew spend doing pothole repairs, crack filling, replacing signs, and repairing sidewalks that are the responsibility. And how much was actually completed for fiscal year 1516 is shown on table four. And then about $1.1 billion of that was for capital street and road expenses, which you see broken out there. The largest being the Robert Avenue Cape Soul project and the Main Street overlay and reconstruction project that was done for fiscal year 1516. I'll just point out, too, real quick, on the expenses, it also includes Public Works' time doing landscape maintenance. These are all the medians and adjacent landscaped area on our streets that are not included in landscape districts, includes time for engineering. We split engineering time up, the, under operating expenses, that's if they do any general reports for 1516. They actually did a street and road survey, as you recall, I'm sorry, not a street and road survey, a speed survey for all the streets within Ripon. So that was, that was the time there. And then under, and then also the administration is Lisa's time doing the necessary audits and grant administration that, as she does. So with that, and at the end of the year, we're left with $2.3 million in the street and road account that's available for future street and road projects. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think from staff standpoint, I think it's a good idea to do this. I think it serves as a good reference to the different funding sources that we get, and it's a great accounting of how the money's being used in the community. I think obviously, as we've talked about, there is a revenue problem within street and road, and it's not just within the City of Ripon, it's within all cities. And a lot of that is just based off gas taxes, and gas taxes have been the same since 1994, which obviously, construction cost is getting more expensive, and there's more roads, and so really, the buying power of that gas tax has gone down tremendously. So I think we've, I think council has taken some really important strides in trying to put money aside and to try to repair roads that we normally don't get a chance to repair, and you see that with the surplus there. So happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Eufer. Vice Mayor Eufer, actually.
What's the timeframe on the improvements on the parking lot off of Stockton and Main Street?
Yeah, we're currently designing it. We anticipate, looking at, start advertising in mid to late November with an award, hopefully at the January meeting. So I think construction will be after that. Be about a 60-day project, 60-90-day project out from there.
When it started, they're going to be done with it, and that, or you're talking about the process of getting to where to get started?
Yeah, to get started, we'd be looking sometime in January, February, actual construction starting, and then a 60-90-day
To finish and wait.
Time frame.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Zubor?
For that parking lot, are we looking at blacktop or pavers?
Yeah, pavers.
I have a couple of questions about table. First of all, thank you for the report. It does a good job of laying out where the money comes from and what we're doing for or with it. But I have a couple of questions about table three. Did I hear you say that the administration costs are a percentage? So they're not actual costs? You take a percentage of Lisa's salary and assign it to administration?
That's right. That's the only one that's not a A time card. Public Works, Engineering, they all fill out time cards for their time. Administration, that's not the case. We, every year, we sit down and take a look and estimate as a percent of time.
Okay. And then also, did I hear correctly that the, under street and road maintenance, the $313,000, that cost resulted in the work that's shown on table four?
That's right.
Labor and materials?
That's all the labor, the burden, everything associated with Ted's guys and their work in street and roads. So it'd be their time and any time for materials.
Okay. And then I have one last one, and this is sort of my, for this particular subject, my attempt to show you what I mean about trying to get something that's easy for the community to grasp. Because I think, in my own mind, this whole report can be summarized in four numbers. What, how much money did we start with in 2015 with streets and roads?
It was the 1.9.
1.9, and how much did we bring in?
Just about $2.1 million of revenue.
And how much did we spend?
1.7.
And we ended with 2.3. And then if somebody wanted to know what we got for our $1.7 million?
This is it. That's it.
Okay.
And we'll continue to update this every year with the audit, and like I said, I think it's a good snapshot with the street and road fund.
And I think, I think I've talked to you about this. I don't know if I've talked about it in, because I, the other piece besides this, we do need to get that street survey updated so that we can show the community just how big a problem we have. We did that about four years ago because it is a big problem.
That's right. And, you know, I, that is planned to come back to the city council in December. Engineering department has been working on that effort. And I think one of the important parts, at least, that I've asked the engineering department is our way of, you know, taking our limited money that we're getting, how we're working or not working. Are we, are we gaining ground or are we falling backwards? And, you know, it's something to look at and kind of take in measure of where we're at, and then also take, take a look in what does the next five years look like? How do, how do we go forward from here? So they'll be coming back to the council in December.
Well, for me, I might be interested also in some sort of, I don't know if it would necessarily be prioritized list, but let's assume somehow, some way, we got 10 million bucks that had to be spent on streets and roads. Of that problem that you're going to show us in December, where would we start? Thank you.
You're welcome. We're going to pay over that corner.
Seeing that, does staff, or not staff, but does council have any other questions or comments concerning item 7B? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to staff reports. Chief?
Nothing to report.
Any report? Mr. Johnson?
Just the update on water conservation. Last month in September, we, we reduced 24.75% from the 2013 year. Our running average is now 30.5%. So we're still right at the, right at the goal that was set last month. Last year in September, we had a reduction of 22% with this year's, this year, this September's reduction being 20, 24.75. We did better than we did last year at this time. We, we sent out 105 warnings compared to last month was 171. So we're starting to see some reductions in the number of violations or issues. We, penalty assessments, we sent out eight, eight, and last month we had 20. So I think we're heading in the right direction. Just want to remind everybody that November 1st, our watering days go down to one day a week. If your address starts as an even address, you can only water on Saturdays. Your odd If you're odd address, you can only water on Sundays. And we are going to be sending out, sending out notices, postcards to everybody, reminding them of this. And one more thing is, starting next Friday, 15th, our fall leaf and brush pickup program starts. That's it.
Thank you, Ted. And then when do we turn off the fountains?
November 1st.
Is it November 1st? Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Stevens?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Zidevart, you're kind of quiet today.
Nothing to report.
James?
Yeah, I will just say, our contractor for the asphalt rubber Cape Hill project is going to begin work next week, speaking of street and roads, so.
Excellent, thank you.
No report.
Nothing to report. Mr. Warner?
No report.
Nothing?
Nothing? Mr. Restuccia?
I had two things, but I'm only going to talk about one. But the first thing is, is we going to notify everybody about the November 1st date?
Yes, we're going to send postcards out.
Okay, good, because I want to make sure you tell Mona, I don't want to have to tell her. Hear a lot of laughs, obviously, everybody knows Mona Bruell. Yeah. One of the things that has been troubling me for some time now is the way that our police, our fire, our sheriffs, our highway patrol, our first responders have been treated. I mean, I'm just beside myself. When I saw the train in New Jersey fly over the top and hit the canopy, and, you know, you saw all the first responders running towards that danger like they always do. And so I wrote something out here that I want to read, and hopefully, so with that, I decided I want to do a grat ruse. I've got a couple of people together, and we're going to do a first responder appreciation day, and I'm going to sponsor it, and I'll pay for everything. We're going to invite the entire community out. I guess I have to get a community permit or something, I guess, but to recognize our first responders. So I'm going to read what I put down because it probably makes a little more sense. So what I've got is, in the future, I plan to introduce a resolution that would honor the Ripons' first responders sometime next spring. And we haven't selected a date yet. Hopefully, Ripon will celebrate First Responder Appreciation Week each ensuing year, the full week, we don't know when that will be, because there's no better time to remember and appreciate our true heroes, not only in Ripon but across the nation. During the first week of the year, most of us make New Year's resolutions and goals for the upcoming year, but I also want Ripon's residents to make a resolution to remember and appreciate our true heroes who lay their lives on the line every day for us. Police, fire, military, sheriff, highway patrol, and emergency medical services, and public health personnel, work tirelessly and selflessly on behalf of the people of Ripon, regardless of the dangers they face. So I'm going to be, we don't have one, I asked, we looked, we don't have an appreciation day for our first, I'm calling it first responders, we may come up with a different name, but I just want to let you know that I'm going to, we're going to figure out a date to do it, and I'm going to introduce a resolution. Hopefully, we can dedicate a week, a year, to give our appreciation for our first responders.
It's a great idea, Mike, thank you very much.
Very good.
Councilman Zubor?
Nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Uker?
Nothing to report.
Oh, come on!
The Giants are up 3-1.
And nothing to, and I have nothing to report, so with that, we will go ahead and close the city council meeting.
We spent good.
Thank you very much for attending.
He doesn't have to talk about it.
He talked about it.
My wife had a good time.
You know what? Somebody's Mary had a good time.